Good evening and welcome to our Goals and Priorities meeting at 6:00 PM on February 9th. We have two more department heads that have to present their goals and priorities for the year in front of the town board. And they are our Director of Building and Codes and Fire Marshal Heidi Bale and our Director of Public Works Eric Tate. And I believe Heidi is going to go first, so please start whenever you're ready.
So I'm going to start with the accomplishments for 2021. COVID didn't slow us down. It was a very busy year for the Building Department and Zoning Department. For year 2021, we had 378 concerns and complaints that were resolved with no violation found. Property maintenance remains the largest concern with debris not being disposed of properly and the piling up on the side as the debris piles up on the side of the properties. And we're also being made aware of more hoarding houses in the area, so we're trying to act on those as quickly as possible.
Heidi, what kind of houses?
Hoarding houses. So hoarding house is a house that has a lot of content in it, that there's not proper egress. There may not be proper water supply, toilets, refrigerators, stoves, just regular living. They may not be, they may not be living safely or healthy. ProChamps, we have 44 properties that are registered. Building applications were up 57% from 2020. I think that had a lot to do with the manufactured homes from Penfield Farms. They're going through quite the revamp. And then we completed almost 3,000 building construction inspections, which is an average of about 54 per week. We have a great team that's ambitious and with their hard work, we were able to maintain a less than two-week turnaround for the entire year. This is the second year that we've been able to do that. Before that, we were kind of behind and we didn't have enough staffing. So now we have quite the team that is able to keep that two-week turnaround with the permits. Very organized team. Christine Shaw has ZBA applications from 2018 through present organized. What she does is she takes these ZBA folders and she makes it, make sure that they're all consistent. So she's gone through and organized those. Andy Sevagis has been working really hard with ZBA resolutions as he gets caught up on the years past. Kathy Anderson, with her patience and determination, she's helped the department in satisfying requests that consist of searching for copious amounts of files and organizing them to be understood by the receiver. There was a couple tedious lists of information we needed to provide it to the state and Kathy went through and got a lot of that documentation for us. Jeff David and I continue to provide support to many of the Pennfield, Town of Pennfield entities and several surrounding emergency agencies. Luke McGrath plays a significant role in helping our department maintain the two-week turnaround time as he does a lot of the plan review, but he's also out in the field doing building inspections. Phil DeLassandro has been able to bring several residents into compliance with his continued follow-up on a resolution, follow-up to get a resolution. So there's a couple problem children that don't necessarily want to listen to the, they don't agree with the town code or New York State code, so Phil has to really follow up with them and, you know, kind of coddle them into compliance. Shannon Barg is our newest team member. She's taking over for Jim Costello on the Town of Pennfield Historic Board. She has organized all the files that Jim passed on to her and we all know how much files that is. I was trying to figure out like a year on it, but I couldn't even do that because I'm sure there's like well past his time even here that she has organized. Jeff David's been completing some plan review on significant projects and has completed a lot of research in New York State and town codes to make decisions, help make his decisions easier on the proposed projects for like safe turning lanes for the fire department, egresses, wide enough roadways, working a lot with DPW also. Staff represented the Building Department while attending numerous meetings such as the Pennfield Town Board meetings, pre-con meetings, Town of Pennfield Historic Board, Monroe County Fire Marshals, and there's a list of them. Any questions on that part before I go into the priorities and goals? I'm not going to go through all of this as I did the first year. I will say that the comprehensive plan has not changed. The Town of Pennfield Building Department staff will continue to promote and protect the general health, safety, and welfare of the community. We're going to continue to provide support to the town boards. We're going to continue the in-house and low-cost training for board members, so zoning board members have to make sure that they get so many hours of training to be a zoning board member. And then it remains a high priority to continue to provide quality service to the applicants and residents in the town. This goal will be obtained by pursuing additional training and continual education experiences through ICC, which is New York State Code, FEMA, New York State DOS, and Monroe County Fire Marshals. We have a very diverse department and I like to look forward to keep maintaining that diverse department as we look to replace a person that is leaving us soon. I want to make sure that that, the duties that that person has been doing, I want to make sure that we follow that more into the code enforcement because we are finding that code enforcement end of it is probably just as busy as building inspections because there's a lot of time taken into court. So we'll move forward with keeping our diverse department. Expenses, the current vehicles being utilized by the Building Department is being reviewed carefully as I look to replace them on a regular schedule. We do have one from last year that we're going to be getting sometime this year, I hope, as I look at Eric.
I hope too.
Yeah, right? And that will help replace one that actually just conked out on us last week, I think it was. The Building Inspectors, they have future training opportunities that they need, they need to complete in order to get their 24 Hours CEUs, so we'll be maintaining that. I believe it's March this year is the regular annual conference. And then the Fire Marshal, same thing. Jeff David and I will be going to the Fire Marshal's Conference, was usually located at the West Webster Firehouse the past couple of years. I'm not sure if that's going to hold true this year, but that's, I want to say it's August or September this year. And then the Clerks, I want to keep maintaining that they have an opportunity to have some training opportunities, more so for the security of the desk, you know, recognizing maybe somebody's personality is, you know, the demeanor may not be as pleasant as one would like. So I'd like them to be, be able to recognize when security or somebody else is needed to come up and help them. And lastly, the disaster plan, as the town grows, the disaster plan grows with it. And then also with the town code changes, the town continues to grow and the town code changes are required manufactured homes. You know, there's more and more of those coming in, small, tiny homes, you know, some of these code changes need to adjust with the times of, you know, the town changing. And that's all I have. Would I be quick?
Are there any questions for Heidi?
Heidi, in Section 2B with respect to expense and capital funding, are the numbers after the vehicles, can you confirm that that's the current mileage for those vehicles?
That is current mileage as of probably January when my first appointment was to go in for the town board.
And is it the 2008 Chevy that you said has conked out?
Yes.
This past weekend? And is it beyond repair?
Yes.
Just surprising given it's, the mileage seems fairly low.
Yeah, unfortunately, just because the vehicles, across all town vehicles, but you know, even the vehicles that are both here for the Town Hall fleet as well as our Recreation Fleet, they sit outside, they're exposed to the elements year-round, they're not, you know, in a garage, they don't get, you know, I don't want to say that they, they're not cared for, but just a lot harder on them sitting out here. It's all, you know, city mileage versus highway, so it's hard on the vehicles themselves.
It tends to be uneven pavement a lot of the times too because those vehicles are going into construction sites, so it's not necessarily all paved. It could be, you know, a dirt road that they're going down.
Sure. So what's, can you further elaborate on what is wrong with this vehicle? Is it an engine issue? Is it?
It needs tires, springs, struts, transmission.
Oh, so transmission is probably the big one.
There's a, yeah, there's quite a bit. It was intended to be replaced last year.
Okay.
We placed an order for the replacement vehicle for it last year. However, with all of the different vehicle manufacturers and the chip shortage, the GM actually closed the build slots and canceled the orders for a number of trucks that not only that we ordered for the Building Department pickup, but also for a number of vehicles that I tried to order for DPW. They canceled after orders were placed and said, sorry, but try again next year or if we're able to build them.
So do you think it would be replaced in Q1, 2, 3, 4?
Yeah, those orders, that isn't necessarily order that I look at. It does come down to, that's, that's more Eric's ball. That's definitely not mine.
Yeah, I mean, we're typically trying to replace the oldest and just kind of rotate, you know, through the fleet, but it also comes down to, you know, if the vehicle is actually roadworthy and safe, if we're able to, you know, we do the, our own New York State inspections, if it's not able to pass New York State inspection or requires a substantial amount to fix, repair, or make roadworthy, then that, that plays into it as well.
So just trying to understand your priority at least for, for this year, is it to be replaced in quarter 1, quarter 2?
So I, it'll probably be.
We wanted quarter 1?
Yeah, ideally it'd be quarter 1. It'll likely be at 3 or 4 merely because the build slots will not open.
Okay.
To be able to even place the order until typically May. As soon as I find out that they are open or are going to be opening, I'll work on getting that in right away. But then because they're not, it's not as simple as just going to a dealership because they have the vehicle that you want on the lot, they actually, being that they're on state contract, they actually have to be specifically built on the, ordered and built through the assembly line for that specific build. So that adds a few months to the process as well before we're able to actually take delivery.
Which now that Eric says that, that could impede on our building inspections and, yeah.
So come spring, summer, this, you're going to be down a car?
Yeah.
Or a vehicle, rather.
Yeah, yeah. So you may have to think outside of the box. I can work with Eric and let you guys know what we can get around that.
I mean, I know in the past, you know, other departments have, you know, been able to, you know, if engineering has a vehicle available, you know, they've been willing to kind of borrow or share. You know, I know there's the assessor's office and there's another car out in the parking lot as well that, you know, could be kind of shared as a go-to for anyone in a pinch as well.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
Good.
You can be nervous.
So it's fair to say you're finding a workaround just in case our order is delayed?
Yeah. We'll work through it.
Okay. Any other questions for Heidi?
I don't have a question, but just a comment. I just want to say I have the pleasure of sometimes having to wake Heidi up or her staff members up in the off-hours to deal with something that's going on in the community. And I just want to say thank you to you and your staff for your prompt response and the way you deal with the residents at their time of need. It's much appreciated from, from the responder side of things, so thank you.
It's a pleasure to have you on both sides.
Great, thank you very much. All right, Eric.
Thank you. So similar to kind of how Heidi started with some of the accomplishments, I can go over some of the.
Thank you, Heidi.
And it's, I'll somewhat focus on kind of Number 2B as for our expense and capital funding of what we were able to accomplish in 2021. Within my original list, there were, I think the ones you have in front, the, everything that's highlighted in yellow, if it did print out in color, you have.
Mine isn't.
I don't have yellow highlights either.
Okay. So some of them were things that we either placed orders for or tried to place orders for that got canceled or that they've started and just we haven't gotten yet. Of the ones that we were able to kind of take inventory of and receive in 2021 would be, you know, Number 5, 6, 7, and 8. The three-ton roller, our backhoe, our track skid steer with the mowing head and grapple bucket attachments, and another sidewalk tractor with V-plow snow blower and front loader. Those have been, you know, we've been using them quite a bit already, doing, you know, everything from catch basin replacements, roadwork, you know, different drainage projects, some tree work, as well as, you know, plowing the sidewalks along main roads that we have been plowing so far this winter. We also have been continuing to work on kind of Number 14, which was the design portion of a new DPW building and facility at our current site on Jackson Road. It's ongoing as we're trying to work out the logistical details of how that would fit and what it would require and take before we kind of take the, the next steps. We also did resurface the tennis courts at Harris Wayland Park. I think that came out great. I know we got new posts for that. We also purchased new nets. While we didn't put the posts up this past fall after the resurfacing was complete, just because of timing-wise and the fact we're going to be taking them down a week later anyway, we will be putting them up come springtime. So you'll have not only a new surface, but new posts, new nets, I think should be well received by the community. We also finished the, Number 17 was the fourth and last phase of the community center roof replacement project. So that roof should be good for at least another 23 to 25 years, given the different phasings and with the warranties that we got with that. We also did install additional security cameras over at the community center and throughout, and installed and implemented a building access control system here at Town Hall that we've used over the past year in various different ways with the kiosk as well as the cameras, the buttons, the controlled access throughout the building. We did a big kind of upgrade at our country club pump station. It was actually a below-ground vault that we moved a bunch of, rather than needing to make a confined space entry every time we wanted to go and do any work on the station, we actually moved the control panel above ground. It's within landscaping in a front yard, but, you know, tried to make that as visibly appealing as possible without having to go through the effort of doing confined space entries each and every time we wanted to, to make any adjustments or check on that station. So that's been a huge help. As far as our biggest kind of roadwork project this past year, we did do a cold place, cold in-place recycle project on Wayland Road from 250 to Dublin. So we actually ground the existing road up, turned that into a new road base and binder, DOT-approved binder equivalent material, and then paved over top of that. So it was certainly in need of work. It was a pretty rough road, but I think it turned out great and I know the residents on that road have been very appreciative. And then we also did or completed just shy of 15 miles worth of chip sealing, which is our oil and stone and micropave process within the various neighborhoods to help prolong the life of the roads. The majority of everything else within here, with the exception of the things that I didn't mention under the capital expense, you know, are kind of ongoing things that we work on and continue to work on every year and I'll, I'll talk about that. A lot of those kind of more within our 2022 priorities and goals. With that said, we, as far as employee and leadership development, you know, we're, we're trying to work with each and every individual and all of the crews, figure out, you know, what each person can do, you know, to improve, to make themselves better, to help make the group, you know, better, better as a whole, trying to come up with ideas that we come up with for them, as well as ideas that, that they have and that they suggest and things that they want to learn about, that they want to figure out how to do or improve upon, and, and combine that throughout the year, kind of keep track of their progress, and then use that to rate them at their annual reviews each year. As far as improved communications, we want to continue our suggestion box program. We have a box in the break room at DPW where if anyone's got ideas, they can drop in a note, it could be anonymous, to come up with any ideas, suggestions, thoughts, comments that they may have. I know Marie has also volunteered or offered to come down to DPW. I think, believe she'll be coming down this upcoming Monday to meet with guys for about an hour if they want to come chat with her one-on-one, you know, over any questions, issues, concerns, and, and we can follow up, you know, on any of that as needed. Every morning, I, myself, my deputy director, and all of the foremen get together. We discuss what all of the crews are going to be doing, what jobs we've got going on, if there's a need for equipment, if there's a need to help one another out, any overlap from department to department, and coordinate everything. We then go out, we talk to all of the crews, explain who's going where, who's doing what, if there's anything in particular that they need to know, and then, you know, find out if they've got any equipment needs or issues and if they've got any questions. We then, kind of everyone breaks up into the individual groups. We then give kind of each group what their particular task is in a sheet to go along with that. You know, that includes a lot of the specifics and things to look for, what to do, and they can kind of keep track of who on the job is specifically doing what duty. We take the, we collect those back at the end of the day, figure out what the job status is, how things are going, and then keep those to be able to refresh our memory when we're looking back for the, all of the annual reviews. As far as safety and attendance management, I am part of the Town Safety Committee, come up here every month for our meeting. We also have had kind of a DPW-specific safety meeting in the past. We have not done them quite as often just because of COVID the last two years, but, you know, certainly want to be doing that if there's issues that come up. We are going through and talking about them internally if they're specific to DPW, but, you know, want to kind of do a little bit more with that in the coming year. As far as, and at those, we're going over, I guess both at the Town Safety Committee and at DPW's, we're going over a lot of incident reviews, anything that, you know, that's happened in the past month and anything that could have been done to prevent an accident or injury from occurring. If there's anything that needs to be done as follow-up, you know, to make sure that it doesn't happen again. And then keeping track of our lost time days, we are currently at 88 days. 89 days ago, we were at a record of 457 days without lost time. So certainly hoping in, hoping that we can beat that record again, but we will take some time.
Can you talk about what that means for when you have an extended period of time without injury or lost time?
Sure.
Is there an effect?
So it, it certainly, you know, it helps having everyone there every day, you know, if, if, if we've got guys out because they've been injured, you know, they're on workers' comp, then the rest of the crew has to help pick up the slack and do the work of, you know, more people with less. So it's, you know, we certainly want to be safety-oriented, make sure that everyone leaves at the end of the day in the same shape that they showed up to work, trying to, to push that and, and make sure that everyone's looking out for not only themselves, but each other as well.
Thanks.
Sure. As far as our performance objectives, you know, we're constantly not only trying to tackle what work we have within the town and basically, or for the town itself, but also any opportunities to grow revenues. So whether it's doing paving work or any type of, kind of road maintenance work for the Monroe County DOT, we've done paving projects for the Pennfield Central School District at their various kind of buildings and facilities, whether it be parking lots, you know, entrances to, to different schools. Just this morning, I was speaking to Monroe County as far, or in reference to some potential paving projects at Allison Park for their Parks Department. So that's something that I'll be starting to kind of work on numbers and come up with an idea if it's something that we may be able to do for them and, and make some revenue for the town over the next few weeks, and then do that work come summertime if, if able. You know, certainly want to make sure that we're keeping track of, you know, all of our budgets. You know, we do have a, I guess the biggest department budget, you know, within the, the town's overall budget, accumulating for approximately 40% of the town's overall budget. You know, want to make sure that we're spending that money as, you know, I guess as appropriately and efficiently as possible. With that, we're also may, trying to make sure that we're maintaining our compliance within DPW. I'm sure when Mark was here talking about, and the engineering side of his priorities and goals, he likely brought up the MS4 permit and our recent audit with the DEC. I've got a significant part helping him out with that and what, how that impacts and affects our DPW and just the overall work that we're doing and how that plays into it. Also keeping track of our fuel system, our spill controls, making sure that our bulk petroleum storage inspections and, and everything is kind of up to date and that we're in compliance with all of that because I also don't want to be wasting any portion of our budget on fines and violations, you know, rather than, than the things that we're hoping to use it for. We, DPW was one of the first Guinea pigs to kind of start out with the new DocuWare program last year. We're still continuing to kind of tweak and, and work through that and figure out what works, what doesn't, what things we can do differently. And also looking at, you know, or looking for any potential grant funding opportunities, whether it's for drainage projects, if it's for, you know, roadway improvement projects, you know, vehicles, different, you know, capital projects, a little bit of everything, and working with Mark and his team on the majority of those. As far as personnel, we plan on existing the, or using the existing employees that we have to kind of get through everything we've got. I don't plan on adding anyone. I know we've got a few contractual, we have a few kind of contractual services, doing some catch basin replacements, some cleaning for us. So we're, we're using some of that to help offset some of the things that we don't have the time and ability to do, or at least to, to do even more than what we're already doing. And the biggest thing is just try to fill, or backfill some of the vacancies that we've got right now. As far as expense and capital funding, some of the things that, and I'm sure you guys have already seen some of the resolutions come through earlier this year, we already put through and ordered our 10-wheel dump truck, we ordered two six-wheel dump trucks, we ordered our, the sewer vector truck. And next week, you're going to be seeing more resolutions coming through for our, the roadside mowing tractor, a one-ton roller, a wheeled excavator to help out with our drainage projects, and a sewer lateral camera. Over the next number of, you know, weeks and months, we're hoping to also purchase, as we, you know, plan for in the budget, an asphalt patch trailer, another crew cab pickup truck to replace, and I can't remember the age, I want to say it's a 2006 pickup truck that we've got that's pretty tired itself. We'll also be looking to place an order for a tilt-deck trailer to help move our bobcats around to get them from job site to job site. We've got a few other pickups that we're looking to replace within the Parks Department, a new zero-turn mower. Even though we have a contractual mowing, or a mowing contract for all town properties, we do utilize that mower for some smaller spots as well as the majority of it with our leaf cleanup on town properties in the fall. We can help kind of mow, shred, and bag those leaves rather than paying to have, especially if there's spot areas that need attention, rather than paying to have the entire properties done. We will also be placed, or looking to place an order for a portable light tower that will also serve as a backup generator, so we can use that during, you know, Election Day evening events where we need additional lighting. If we have an. day, evening events where we need additional lighting, if we have an emergency road project or, you know, sewer issue in the middle of the night and we need lighting to see what we're doing, we've got a tree down, we'll be able to drag that out or use that as a backup generator in the event of a power outage to help power up some of our sewer pump stations around the town. We will also be, or intend on continuing the design and work towards a new DPW garage facility, and we'll continue to work through that process. For playground equipment, we were looking at, seeing what we can do, the lower Harris Wayland Park playground is the next oldest. It is still in okay shape for part of it. I know that the swings are non-compliant, so we've actually taken the actual swings off the frame itself, but it is non-compliant just because it's on a hill, you know, so we want to take that off and possibly relocate that to make sure that it is compliant when we're doing our monthly playground inspections, and then see what else we, what money we've got and where prices have gone to replace part of the playground or what we want to do with that. We're also looking to resurface the tennis pickleball and basketball courts over at Greenwood Park, as those are the next courts that are in need of resurfacing, the next oldest, or at least the ones that they've been resurfaced, the next in line to be resurfaced. And I believe Mark has, or you guys, two weeks ago, week ago, put out to advertise for bids or, sorry, didn't advertise for bids, accepted to award the bid for the Roffus Fields Expansion Project. So that'll be something that, you know, we'll work with engineering to oversee the construction of that and then help make sure once, once that's considered complete, to make sure that that gets taken care of and that the grass actually comes in over there so that it can be used in the future. Going to continue to work with engineering, you know, and yourselves on the master plan implementation for the Shadow Pines property. So between the disc golf, the pickleball, the recreation areas, the walking trails, and whatever else, you know, becomes of that property, we'll continue to work on that. Looking to replace four rooftop HVAC units on our town facilities, two of which were actually just completed last week in the snowstorm. So we're down two already and looking to do at least two more. If money allows, we'll do more, so. And then looking to install additional security cameras within our buildings. We do have our own recorder in this building as well as the community center. That's kind of a big expense to start off upfront, so we've got some money that we can add some additional cameras for locations that we've since realized are in need. Couple of years ago, we were contacted by the state as far as a New York State ready grant with the lake shore flooding. So the, with the money that we were allocated and awarded for that, the Empire Number One pump station that's down at the La Salle's Landing kind of parking lot off to the corner, that pump station actually needs some improvements, as well as raising it by two feet to, in the event that the lake levels rise, that that's not inundated and that continues to function and flow and pump the sewage and not lake water. So we'll be working on that this year. While we are hoping to be able to complete it kind of late in '21, we did have some other work with some gutter replacements and spot road work that needed to be completed first in preparation prior to, you know, a neighborhood paving project. All of the prep work has been completed, we just didn't get around to the paving portion, but this year we're looking to do, at least start with the Redwood Drive, Cascade Drive, and Pine Brook Circle neighborhood, milling and repaving all of those roads. Again, we'll see what the state allocates us as far as CHIPS, PAVE New York, and Extreme Winter Recovery money, and what we can do, if we can do more, would certainly like to. Just can't spend what we don't have either, and that's to be determined. And lastly, we'll be looking to kind of chip seal approximately, or an additional 15 miles worth of various town roads, just to help build up the wearing surface and prolong the life of those roads as a cheaper alternative to milling and repaving. You'll also see I've got some 2021 carryovers. The first two, where we indicated that we're looking to take inventory of our 10-wheel and six-wheel dump trucks, or plow trucks, we have since received those. We actually got those in early January, so those have been out plowing roads already. The next one is a purchase of a pickup truck. Actually, the next couple are purchasing pickup trucks. Those are trucks that I tried to order in '21, that orders got canceled, and we've carried the money over to still be able to get those. So hopefully come May, I'll be able to place orders for those as well. The next one is taking inventory of our camera van, that also showed up in early '21, or early '22. So we've got that now and already out and about using that. The next one down is a purchasing another pickup truck for the sewer department. We're actually, because of the cost of the vector that we just ordered, came in higher than, quite a bit higher than what we were told than what the prices were last June when we started working on the budget. You know, the vector is certainly a higher priority. We've just, we've kind of changed our mind on that pickup truck and are using the money that was allocated for that pickup truck and putting it towards what we had budgeted for the vector to be able to cover the cost of that, the vector. So that truck's kind of going away, but the money's being reallocated and reused to be able to cover the increase and, for that vector itself.
And I should mention, Eric, that the vector's used about three-quarters of the time every month. I mean, it's a heavy use.
Yeah, in the summer, it's well over 80% of the week.
Right.
On average, in the winter, it's less, but just because of the freezing temperatures and the fact it's carrying water tanks, we don't want that to freeze and cause, you know, more damage to the truck or not be able to use it in the event of an emergency later on.
Thank you.
Sure. Few other, you know, work vans and pickup trucks. Again, those were orders that we tried to place that got canceled. And then the last one is the two rooftop HVAC units that we just completed last week. So it should be the majority of expense and capital funding. I'm sure there's going to be more that come up, but that's at least what we're planning for right now, what we know about. As far as specialized support, we'll continue to work with our mechanics diagnostic laptop and software with Synergy to make sure that that's working and that we can avoid costly repair bills with that, you know, rather than sending it to, you know, different vendors to do the diagnostic work, we can do a lot of it ourselves, or at least determine what repairs need to be made to determine if the repairs could be made by us or if it's something that needs to be sent out. We also have a contract in place with Solara Concepts for our snow and ice program. That's the program that we use to generate all of our snow and ice tickets for our billing for reimbursement to the Monroe County DOT and to the New York State DOT for any and every time that our plow trucks are out plowing those roads, that the Penfield taxpayers aren't covering the cost of plowing the county and the state roads. We're doing it, but we're being reimbursed by the respective government agencies. For training, you know, we do a lot of in-house training ourselves. There's also some kind of outside training through Cornell Cooperative Extension for various programs. The, annually, there's a highway superintendent's conference, there's advocacy day in Albany, there's, and working on kind of setting that up and meeting with some of our representatives in the coming weeks. There's also the annual highway school in Ithaca that we'll be looking to sign up for in the coming couple of weeks. Our security guards all go through an annual training to renew their New York State security guard license, so that they've got that and they're considered certified, so we go through that for annually. Same thing with our nuisance wildlife control operators, that's for our animal control officers and everything that they're able to do with the transportation of wildlife. And then our parks department specifically does a number of trainings for some of the pesticide applications and all of our playground inspections that we do. They've got to be trained playground inspectors for that. The, some of the major projects that'll require interaction with other town departments will be just our ongoing drainage projects and the permit application process that we work with our engineering department. They coordinate a lot of that, you know, with the ECE and make sure that everything's in place, as well as the Army Corps of Engineers, to make sure that we're good with what we're planning on doing and that, you know, then we go out and do the actual work and then make sure that, you know, when we're said and done, that everyone's happy and accepting of what has been done. We'll continue to work with kind of finance and IT for the DocuWare program and the bumps in the road that come about with that, and, you know, work with yourselves, our finance department, and legal counsel for the kind of design and bond preparation and implementation of a new DPW garage facility at some point. The, and then I guess the last thing is working with engineering and finance, given that it's a New York State ready project grant, as far as the Empire One pump station improvements and how we get, you know, we'll have to spend the money, but we'll get it back, and what we need to do to get through all of that. I think that's about it. You guys got any questions?
Eric, I have one on the vacancies. Are those due to retirements? And how many vacancies do you have now in DPW or in?
So we've, it's a number, number of different things. We've had some retirements, we've had some employees leave and take opportunities elsewhere. We, in total, we have, we have some openings within our, you know, for security guards with, to help out with different days, nights, you know, some additional coverage or options for coverage for the court and their schedules and different things that they've got going on, as well as our parks and facilities themselves. We will be looking for an office account clerk within our DPW office itself. We have some upcoming retirements that we know about over the next few months within a few different departments that we're kind of preparing for. You know, we have an opening in our sewer department right now, we have an opening in our highway department, or a few openings in our highway department right now. Trying to think what there's, I think that's most of it.
It's most of it?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Eric, I'd be remiss if I didn't echo the same comments, because you and I have stood in the middle of roads at 2:00 in the morning while your crews get called out of bed to cut trees and clear highways, and if it's not shutting down roads to prevent the public from, you know, driving into a downed tree or wires, it's removing them so the cars can get through. So again, thank you to you and your staff for those times too. It's a huge help for the community.
Sure. Thank you.
Is there anything else? Thank you again. I know Department of Public Works, it's sometimes very awful work, right, in terms of having to work in the heat and the snow, et cetera, but we really do appreciate the work you do to keep our roads safe and our community safe, really. So thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that concludes our goals and priorities, so we'll stand adjourned until our work session begins at 7:00 PM.